Hello.
Hello.
Oh. Can I make you the, uh, the host for now?
Sure.
Okay. One sec here.
Yes, because of course I can't get on it on my computer.
You are now the host. If you don't mind.
Okay.
Are you all set?
I guess I've never done this part, so.
Well, if you, um, does Leanne usually do it?
Yeah, as soon as she comes in, I'll just have her do it.
You know how to, you just click on her name and then assign, and then hit assign host.
Okay.
Or you can make a co-host if you both want to be hosts.
Okay.
There's two options there. Either one's fine.
And it's already recording?
Yep.
Okay.
Um. How you doing?
Um, okay. I'm, uh, I'm just looking it over and.
I want the next two weeks over.
Oh, my goodness, please, please, please. It's giving me headaches and that's, ah, I, I suffer from migraines as it is and I have underlying other issues. So when I get one, I'm out for the count. So I'm like, uh, I feel it coming on. As soon as I texted this last week, I said, I'm not coming. I have a headache. I was out until the next morning. I, I just can't function. I can't be on anything. I can't think of anything. I have to turn everything off. It has to be pitch black in my room. I, I, I just can't see on them. I'm like, please don't anybody text me. But how's everybody on your end? John. Oh, okay. Yes.
I'm back in. Uh, that was weird. I just want to make sure everything, oh, I'm, something must have went goofy on my internet. Um, okay, it's working now.
Mine's doing the same thing. I mean, on my computer.
Right. Who do you have for your provider?
Comcast.
Yeah, that's who I have. I saw somebody on that neighborhood post thing asking if other people were having, I've had issues for the last couple of weeks on and off.
I thought it was just me.
I'm thinking there's something wider going on.
I'm gonna have to call them.
Yeah, I, uh, I've had to call, I've had to call and have my, but sometimes I'll just unplug and plug back in and it'll be okay for a while, but sometimes I actually have to call them and something's going on. Like I said, I'm seeing people post stuff about it. It's been frustrating.
Yes, it is. Because you hear again, that's why my stuff was dropping and that's why I won't put my picture up because sometimes it's easier not to have the picture and it works better for some strange reason. But once I have both of them, I have that, uh, feedback.
Right.
And then, no, I'm not trying that. And then, um, I said, you know what? No picture anymore. I don't care what anybody says.
Right.
I just can't deal with it. You either want me on the call or not.
It takes a lot more, it takes, it's up a lot of, you know, the upload speed, it takes up a lot of doing the, uh, live streaming.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I mean, to, for you to upload your stream. But, uh. Okay, I'm gonna head to dinner if that's okay.
Yep, if I need you, I'll text. If you don't mind.
Yep, I got my phone.
Okay.
No problem. Have a good night.
You too.
Bye.
Bye. I just have to watch everybody coming in. Hi, Leanne.
Hey Juliette, how you doing?
Getting there, getting there.
Good girl.
I'm so sorry, but I had a migraine. I can't do it. I just can't do it when it, I, I get too sick.
Oh, I understand. I, I'm not, I, well, I did when we lived in Hawaii, I used to get them, but I haven't since, but I know they're just terrible.
So I, when I texted her, I was like, um, I'm not coming. I'm got a wicked headache. And as soon as I texted that, I was out cold. You know how it goes. You have to have it pitch black and quiet and nothing's on. I don't even think I ate that night. Actually, matter of fact, I know I didn't eat because I didn't wake up till the next morning. All right, so I mean, John made me the host, but I just, I made the co-host so that, uh, since I've never done that before, so we're all set. And I started meeting where they were very unhappy, huh?
Oh, to say the least, to say the least, but that's okay. I thought that, well, I'll wait till we get a couple of other people and then I'll, I'll.
Oh, wait, I gotta at least add a, let me make my notes. Cause I didn't even print this down. I have to pull it up.
I was hoping maybe that.
So they don't even want the, no, wait, okay.
Yeah, I, I sent her the information.
To, uh, Natalie?
Mm-hmm.
Well, somebody already sent it to her, so that's, she already knew about it.
Oh.
Cause of what she wrote.
Which, oh, uh, before?
But it is what it is. We gotta have, there's some things we have to have in there, cause.
Yeah. Oh, there's no doubt about it. It was, it really was a matter of my not being familiar enough with Robert's rules. So as they were asking me, they wanted to know where I got it and I.
I put the page numbers on the thing. It's right there beside it.
Let me look. I don't think.
I thought I did.
No, you didn't.
Oh. I didn't. I thought I, you know what? I wrote it on my thing. Rule eight pages three ninety-one and three ninety-five. Sorry, I thought I put that in there.
No. So.
Or did I put it in a notes, meeting minutes? Cause that looks like it's my meeting. Nope, I didn't do that that way. Okay. I do have, I do have where I took stuff from.
Okay, well, that's fine. We can.
And it's not like they. I gotta look at what, what's McCollitt put down for page two forty. All of a sudden, they're knowledgeable about Robert's rules.
Yeah.
I wish I could have gotten hold of Jackie Massit though.
Oh, I never thought about that. She knows that stuff inside.
She was all on top of that.
Hmm. I haven't talked to her for a while. I called her a few weeks ago just to see how things were going.
Yeah.
And, you know, she was still, she really wanted to do anything.
Not yet, yeah.
Thank you, except it's still not printing.
Oh, it says Counselor Aubrey for you Natalie on the screen.
Well, that, that's very strong.
Oh, cause are you using her thing?
Yes, I, I, I'm using a link she sent me, yes.
No, I don't think I, I can rename you Natalie.
There you go.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Yep.
Juliette, yeah.
Okay, you want me to rename you?
I don't care.
Okay.
I, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
I was just talking to Conrad a few minutes ago. You know, and he may have to leave because of a job.
Yep.
So he says to me, oh, who's that handsome man behind you Natalie? Well, he zipped in, he zipped out.
The handsome man behind me, that would be my husband Bill.
Anyways, he says to me, um, I'm gonna nominate you to take over the town Democratic committee. I said, oh, no, you're not. I'm not doing it again. There's gotta be somebody that's ready for that pain and agony. Oh, wow, it's, uh, five thirty-one, so I'm going to, uh, call the meeting to order. Um, this is a special meeting, so we don't have to do anything about approval of minutes, I do not believe. And we'll just go on to new business. Oh, there he is again. He's definitely getting my attention Natalie.
Trying to print something for me. Our printer's being finicky.
Oh.
My technological skills are not great.
I know what you mean.
He's my, he's my tech support guy.
Every house needs one, that's for sure.
Wait a minute. Okay.
But that's, don't, to wait for this, that's fine. You can go ahead and.
Oh, fiddle faddle.
Fiddle faddle.
Fiddle faddle.
My, well, I'm trying to have everything open at the same time, so I'm using three different things, which is not how this should go.
You're doing what?
I'm trying to have, I have my, this is on my phone. Logging in's on my phone. I am trying to read what she sent for the meeting minutes, so I could see what happened. And I'm trying to also pull up at the same time what I typed up.
Oh, okay. Well, I've got a copy of from our last meeting. What we had that we were talking about. And, um, I was reviewing some of it, but I gotta tell you, I, I think I got the best thing for me. I don't know if you can see this or not. Can you see this?
I can't see any pictures. I can't see anybody.
Yes.
Robert rules for dummies.
Ah.
And it's awesome. It really is awesome. And it goes by Natalie's, uh, suggestion to us that we got too complicated. So.
And there's reasons why we got too complicated. I mean, I get where we're going with it, but we were trying to see if we can get it to be calmer, but I don't know what to do. Hi, Andre.
Hello, Counselor Parker. Hello, Counsel, uh, Chair.
I'm sorry.
And.
That.
And hello, former Counselor, uh, Billings.
Okay, um. I ju, I just was gonna mention too. Um, we did get a request from Rachel. Do you want to, um, talk about that at all, or do you want to leave it to a regular meeting?
Well, uh, Chair Aubrey would suggest we go through the, just follow the agenda items first and maybe, um, just kind of go through the rules. Um, I know there were, um, we'll be looking to revise our set of rules.
Yeah.
Based on the feedback that, um, we solicited from the council at a, the last meeting and obviously, um, you know, there are many counselors that provided, uh, various suggestions, so, uh, do we want to provide a recap of some of those suggestions? It's, uh, how, how do you want to go about discussing?
Well, I don't think it was really suggestions. They wanted clarification as to where we had gathered what we were suggesting. And I did not have the familiarity with Robert's rules to be able to answer them. Whose phone is that?
I'm sorry, that's my printer that finally just printed what I, the suggestions I had sent, uh, to you and Andre.
Um, gosh, I printed those and now I don't know where I put them. Well, let's, um.
Are we just gonna go, let's just go one by one.
Okay.
And go from there.
All right. I have right here. Let's see. All right, I think the first time, the first time we had any kind of a change on page. I went through trying to mock them. Page three of eleven. That's the first place I see anything mocked. Did I miss anything prior to that?
And what, what's, what's the subject clearly, Leanne?
The subject.
Wait a minute. We actually have page two. Wait a minute, is this the original? Are we doing it from what we've highlighted?
On what was highlighted.
Okay, page two is the first one.
All right, is that the five?
The thirty minutes, no.
I must have missed that one. Which, which number is that?
Rule number four, quorum and vote. It's under C.
Okay.
So, uh, if I may, on, um, page three, uh, the first suggested change is.
Wait a minute, we gotta go back a page just a second. Because, uh, we had put in, under, like she said, under rule number four, uh, number, uh, letter C. Um, make extend the recess prayer to thirty minutes. I don't know what it was before. Does anybody know?
One hour.
Oh, okay.
That, 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 um, they, um, if I recall correctly, under worked any issues amongst those on them.
Okay. So now we will go on to consent calendar. Uh, I'm sorry, which one were you talking about, Andre?
Uh, this was at page, um, so page three.
Yeah.
Rule seven A. Um, the mayor, the mayor had, um, I explained why the current, um, the current rule, the rule as it is written suffices. Um, in order to call the meeting to order, you have to obviously have a quorum. If you don't have a quorum, you can't, there is no meeting to call, uh, obviously, uh, called to order, so. Um, well, you know, I think it was understood where we were trying to go with it. Uh, I think in just reality, uh, it doesn't need any change.
Yeah.
But when we do committee the hall and then town council, we do it two different ways.
Well, it should be the same on both of them.
But they're not.
I know. I'm saying, we'll suggest that they both, both be the same. Roll call, declare a qualum, quorum and call to order. And we'll suggest that it be the same for, for both types of meetings.
All right, so we're changing that and scratching that out. Am I doing this as a?
Yep.
Is this a special meeting where we're making changes and we really probably, all right. Okay. Let me, uh, do a save as. And draft number fifty. No, I'm sorry, three. So we're crossing that out. I'm just gonna cross it out.
Okay. Leave as it is, same for both types of meeting. And, okay, now. Natalie, anytime you want to say something, don't be polite, just.
Jump in.
Come on in. Okay, I think the next thing was under rule number seven. Number seven, consent calendar.
Okay.
Um, we had, it had been deletion from the town council referral list. Move to D or maybe removed, as this has not been part of the packet.
But it has since been placed in as a separate packet under the town manager's report.
Okay.
So. He's been providing that update to us, so does that go, should that go under the town managers to make communications reports?
I would be okay with that. What do you think, Counselor Baumgarten? Andre.
Um, so is this, so are we talking about the consent calendar here?
No, this is, um.
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
No, it says the town council referral list. That's the thing.
Yeah, but under consent calendar is section C.
Oh, yeah. But we were talking about, that's what I said, section C, deletions from the town council referral list. Move to D or maybe removed, as this has been not part of the packet. So you're saying to me that the town manager is now reporting on it?
Yes. Is that, isn't that what we've been getting, or is that the open items?
It's open items that we get a list for. It's the same thing.
Because, because, um, there, so all matters to be deleted from the, uh, referral list are, um, listed on the consent calendar. And so I'm just reading the rules, so in our current rules, so after six months, any, uh, non-recurring referral that has not been acted upon shall be placed on the consent calendar for deletion.
Where's it say all that?
In our rules.
In here?
Yeah, page, uh, page ten.
Okay, well, you gotta give me a referral, cause I don't know what you're talking about there.
Can, can I just ask?
Yes.
Why are you even talking about possibly changing the deletions from the town council referral list?
Because of the new system, when they go into this new system, it doesn't show us the open items or the deleted items. Once it's approved and everything, it's done. After we have our committee, the hall and then town council meetings, it's gone. So if there's any other questions about it, we won't see it unless we ask for a deletion's report, a referral list report.
When you say the new system, you mean a new computer system?
Yes, they have a new system that they're using.
Okay. So the council, but so you don't see the actual list of items on the deletion list before you move the consent calendar?
Correct. He types it up on a separate thing, right?
More, more recently in some agendas, he has created a separate document and that has almost like an addendum to the council, uh, agenda. Where it would include that, that, the information that would be included in that referral list.
Well, if somebody's doing something some of the time, we need to make it more specific than, how it's gonna be done all the time. Would you agree?
Yes, it should, it should, it should be done consistently.
Yeah. So, um, the thing is, the re, town council.
But when you vote on.
I'm sorry.
But when, but when you vote on the consent calendar, are you still voting to delete items from the, the referral list?
No, we move everything as a whole.
Yeah, that, that's what I mean. When you move the consent calendar.
Uh-huh. Actually.
Does that include deleting?
No.
No.
No, it doesn't.
I don't, I don't know how you process, so.
No, I, I mean, I read my agendas pretty, uh, uh, you know, before the meetings and, uh, I seldom have I seen any, you know, any deletion, um, you know, thrown into the consent calendar unannounced. Um, so I, I don't, I think actually, I think that's a common, a practice we should probably bring back up because oftentimes there are issues counselors bring up and we may have had to delay discussion on it because of COVID, because of other, other things happening in town. And you make that referral, you know, it could be months before you, you hear it. And so in the case where there really is no progress on a referral that is made, or there is no reason to, you know, to continue with, um, moving forward with that referral, there should be, I think, some discussion from, by the council after that referral is made to close the loop. Uh, so that there is an understanding in council that, you know, we no longer need to deliberate on that, on that referral or that issue. Um, and that, that ha, is not happening and hasn't happened, I think, in my time on the council. And if I can recall, that is something that would be, um, more, that would be more of commonplace in previous councils.
Uh, is there anything that you know of that we can refer to for that?
Well, the, I mean, there used to be a, in, a referral list and I think the, the council, when, if there is a referral that no longer needed any action, or they didn't want to take any action on it, they, they would, you know, they would, as part of the consent calendar, there would be, they would delete that item from the referral list so that they wouldn't, they're, you know, so you wouldn't need to have discussion on that item in the future.
Natalie, where did you used to have it? Do you know?
Uh-huh. At a, at a certain point, I think it became this, what's listed here in your rule, that the deletions from the town council referral list became part of the consent calendar. But if I understood what Andre just said. But if I understood what Andre just said, I, I, if I understood you, Andre, so you correct me. I would kind of agree with what I think you're saying, which is having it on the consent calendar can be a problem. Because it doesn't really allow you to talk about, wait a minute, do we want all these items to be deleted? Is that what you were saying, Andre? Did I understand that right?
Yes.
Yes, so, so you're, you're suggesting moving the deletions from the town council referral list, taking that out of consent calendar?
Yes.
And handling it some other way?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and I, I would agree with you.
Yeah, I, I would too, cuz I've, uh, there are times I've had to ask for it. So where do you think it would be appropriate? Uh, to put that under the ma, uh, under the manager's report? I mean, he could have it there and.
Or would this go under other business, or is this still old, is technically old business, isn't it?
It is and it isn't, I mean, it's things that haven't been taken care of, so, yeah, I guess it would be.
I, I would suggest you put it towards the end of your meeting. So you, if there's discussion about it, you don't get bogged down in that before you do your business for the night. But kind of at the end of the meeting, you have an item, deletion from town council referral list. In terms of the order of business. So, new business, actually deletions from town council referral list would go under new business, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I think so. There's something taken care of.
Well, it doesn't mean it's taken care of, it just means you may be deleting it and you've never even discussed it, but. New business, or other business? Old business, I, I don't know.
All right, how about if we do this, with this one, we, since there's no meeting this week, it gives us a little bit more time. Cuz we have to be the first on the agenda for our next meeting. Do you realize that?
Okay. No, but, um, we have to pause for a moment. And looking at our agenda, we do have to approve our minutes.
All right, well, we can.
I just wanted to say that, sorry.
Uh, just a second, all I have on here is, oh yeah, approval of minutes, and I guess there were some minutes back there. All right, have you all read your minute, you have the minutes from before?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the council rules and procedure committee special meeting minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty.
I second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, now, I think what we gotta do is figure out where we wanna put this. And I'm almost thinking maybe under, what would, what about if it was under administrative items?
What, what I would recommend, uh, Council Obreeze, we, we have, I think, a lot of items to discuss tonight, just based on how last me, last meeting went. And, uh, I think for that, this question, that's a little more technical in nature, maybe we should, um, research it a little bit, touch base with some town staff. You know, some folks who are advising us on, on these rules as well, just to put together the language as opposed to discussing it now, cuz I, I know it's gonna need some more technical revision anyway. So maybe we can ask then to the, you know, to the right parties, where, where are the best place to put that existing language, so maybe if we can just highlight it, and say we need to go back to it.
All right, but I don't have a problem with making it part of the administrative items, it's a list that we don't normally get, that way we would get it, and if something had been changed, we'd know it.
I mean, it's. I think, I think, Leanne, the issue might, is that deletions from the referral list needs to be voted on by the council. So, it, it's not just administrative, I, I would suggest for now, just a suggestion that you put it after new business with other business, under other business, and maybe you create its own separate listing there on the, on the agenda, that after new business, you do deletions from the referral list.
And we just, we might need to check with John and see if he can, if they can do it that way, under the system. Cuz that's always been a separate report.
Okay, we'll check with John. All right, moving on.
Okay. So, was there a problem with liaison reports? Or they wanted clarification of the liaison reports?
Under committee reports, we had liaison, etc. Uh, we talked quite a bit about that, if I remember correctly. We were trying to get the, we were, when we were talking about it before, we were trying to get it so that the liaison reports get the time and attention that they should have, not just saying you went to the meeting. And so we were looking for a place to put them, and we were talking about making them part of committee reports. And I think that's where they should be.
Under committee reports or under communication reports, cuz committee reports are totally different from.
No, it's still a committee report, it's still, you've gone to a committee meeting and you come back and you're talking about it. I mean, I realize liaisons are not a committee.
So for instance, my TVCCA report should be going under its committee report. When I go to the TVCCA meeting. You're saying that should be going onto the committee reports?
I think so, because they don't get proper time or attention.
Cuz our current committee reports are the pub, uh, personnel in appointments, the rules committee, the public safety committee, and there is another. So, I, I thought those were separate things, I think those, I thought those were committees that we ourselves did, not what we do out in the pub, in community.
All right, what would be your suggestion then?
Well, it should be still under communications.
So you're suggesting leaving it right there. Juliet, under, under eight, Roman numeral eight, communications reports and liaison reports, just leaving it right there.
Right, because everything else is a committee, it's us leading the committee, not other groups leading the committee. Like, you're currently, you're doing the rules committee, you will report out what we've done in rules committee. Uh, Council Baumgarten would do the public safety committee because that's where he was appointed to, that, at least that's my thought process on committee reports. But I, I don't know, if that's what, if you guys think me being a liaison to another committee, uh, group should go under committee reports, I'm more than welcome to say, do that then. But, cuz, but it's not listed when we do our meetings.
No, it hasn't been, and that's what we were trying to get put in. Does anybody have a suggestion other than committee reports? Would it be, um?
The other suggestion is leaving it right there where it appears in red, Leanne, on, in eight, communications reports and liaison reports. Is that what you recommended last time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Andre?
Looks good to me.
Okay. Okay, and then under other business, that's when we were gonna have the counselors talk about different events that they had attended. Rather than have it at the beginning, like we have right now.
That's good.
Everybody okay with that one?
Um, it, so while I was a suggestion, I'm, I'm okay with it, it, it did seem like there were some folks on the council who were not, not so supportive of that.
Well, um, then if it becomes a, a point of contention, we'll ask them where they think it should be, we feel with, under other business, uh, they're gonna have an opportunity to talk about the things. They talk about them now at the beginning of the meeting, nobody's really paying any attention.
No, cuz then they forget, cuz we start talking about what we're there for. At least if we do it at the end, people will hear it, that'll be the last thing they hear and say, oh, I can write that down, and I'll remember that. I, that's just me, that's why I was, I thought it would be better to go there.
Let's try it that way, we'll see how we make out. All right, um, those, uh, the one, a question I had is under B, number three, those speaking under eight communications and reports, other than committee reports, what do you think that might be?
That's the liaison, that's the other, the communications, like if we receive a email or the liaison reports, it shouldn't take more than five minutes to discuss that.
No, liaison is gonna be up where it says committee reports.
No.
Yeah, I, I interpret it as you have fi, uh, uh, to five minutes to speak during your communications.
Correct, that's what it's saying, it's just trying to not let counselors go on too long under their communications.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're okay with that one?
Yes.
All right. All right, now on page five. Um, at the top, the only thing that we had taken out was, uh, as ineffective on the date of adoption of these rules. You know, we can, we can't, that can't really be, cuz they do make changes, we have to go by the, the changes they may make in the rules, correct?
You know what, I would act, I would actually suggest, Leanne, that you specify a particular, like Robert just came out with this new version, which is the twelfth. And I would suggest you actually specify which edition. You were using when you wrote these rules, because then your citation, when you cite where it came from, it's gonna be, it's gonna be consistent, this latest ver, this is the latest version.
Which is what, when we first started, that wasn't out when I picked up the book, cuz twelve wasn't out when I bought my book this summer.
Yeah, it literally just came hot off the press.
So, is, does this mean I need to buy another book?
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how much substantive change there is, but the format is a little different. Um, and so the citations were, uh, are, are gonna be different.
So we should say, but when we did this, we did it from the eleventh edition. Right, Council Baumgarten, that's, that's what I used.
But did you, didn't put actual citations though, when you.
I forgot to put the page number, so I have it written down on my other paper, I just didn't type it in here.
And, and we made a suggested change to the rules that, um, so it's really the first, uh, I'm sorry, page five. Uh, that the, that the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern the council in all cases in which they are applicable, provided they do not conflict with these rules, the town charter, uh, ordinances, or applicable statutes. So the la, uh, latest in your eye, latest is, uh, okay language to use as opposed to current?
Did you suggest using the twelfth edition? Should we say the twelfth edition? Not what we use.
So the previous language we used was current addition, uh, we changed it to latest edition, so we do not clarify the number, and I think we did that the latest, uh, just so that it would be the most recent, uh, addition. So that we didn't have to obviously change the rules every time the, you know, there would be a new, newly revised edition to roll out. That, you know, it, our rules would be, um, that the latest edition, the newest edition of Robert's rules would be the, the, you know, the rules that the council would, you know, would, would utilize.
Yeah, that's, that should be fine.
Okay. All right, so we're okay on that one. The next thing is questions, point of order. One of the things that I did research, because it was mentioned many times. Let's see, yeah. In number, in B, where they, they say that the mayor may speak on and shall decide questions of order. Any counselor may appeal a decision by the mayor on questions of order. Such appeal may be referred to the rules committee, which will make recommendations to the town council for decision on the basis of in order of precedence. Town child, the rules of council, I think I'm trying to get to, is the council may be recessed, we cannot do that. You cannot recess for your rules committee. It has to be in writing, and there has to be a, a notice of meeting.
Right.
So that has.
In it.
Well, I understand that. But that's been in there, this was here before we even got on board, so everybody's been doing it wrong for how many years? So, we're taking that one out.
Yep.
Okay.
So if I, if I could just offer, this is one thing that I have some cl, clarity for you. Yes, to everything that you're saying, for reasons I don't understand, that reference to the root, referring it to the rules committee was in the town council rules and the RTM rules going back decades. And it's wrong, it's a problem. And you're saying, cuz you can't do it under FOI, but also cuz it's not what Robert says, it's not how you do an appeal of the mayor's decision. So, it belongs out of there for both of those reasons.
All right, so.
So there's, if somebody wants to put a rule in, you know, a request into the rules committee, they can do that, and then we will review it at a, at an announced meeting.
Well, 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 let's back up, Leanne. What's important here is to understand what an appeal is.
Okay.
When, when a member of the body says point of order, a member of the body thinks something is out of order.
Yeah.
They're asking the mayor to rule that Counselor Heed speaking right now is out of order, or taking up this item of business is out of order. And the mayor gets to decide that, the mayor says, yeah, it's out of order. But when the mayor does that, if the members of the council disagree with the mayor, if a majority of the members disagree, all that has to happen is for one member of the council to say, I appeal from the decision of the mayor. That's the appeal in Robert's rule.
But does that have to be voted upon with?
Yeah.
Okay, but.
As I appeal, which is making a motion. It's, I make a motion, they don't have to say, I make a motion to appeal, they just say, I appeal from the decision of the mayor. Somebody has to second it. There can be some brief discussion. And then the council votes. And even if the mayor said, no, this is out of order, we can't discuss this, it's not germane to the council, it's not under our jurisdiction, whatever the mayor said, or, but if the body disagrees, the council rules that, and it's a simple vote of the council. And it's a simple vote of the council. If fi- if five, uh, members of the council say, no, we think it's in order, and that person should be able to continue to speak, or we should be able to take up this item of business, the council controls that. So I sent a thing to Andre and Leanne, some language that I'm. Juliet, you didn't, I only, I sent it to Leanne and Andre just because they responded to my thing, where I said, if you want some input, I have it. They both said they're.
All right, it'd be nice because I, I type it up, so.
Absolutely. I, I'm sorry. I didn't get it to you. Absolutely.
Well, I should have. I didn't realize, but you know, a question.
So they really, you can shorten this whole section if you want to. Um, if you're willing to use some language I'm offering, and you, you're welcome to do whatever you want, of course, of course. I just offered.
I think from reading it would probably be very good. What do you think, Andre?
Absolutely, and I, I've spoken with, um, Miss Billings about this already. Um, I think the, you know, we can achieve a lot more with much more simpler language. Obviously, what's most important is we don't want any language to run up. Uh, we don't want to run afoul of any, uh, existing FOIA statutes. And, um, I think with the, the way the language is written, um, we may, um, so that, that is my most principal concern. So I think because of that, um, we should really just follow, I think, the rules that is so simply, uh, put in Robert's rules and very, um, easily understandable, um, you know, so that, um, uh, if there is a, you know, uh, if, if, um, someone, if councillor is called out of order, they have the chance to appeal it, make their case. Um, perhaps there is a, you know, a back and forth, and then it is put to a vote. Um, uh, the, uh, you know, the reversal of, uh, you know, of, of be.
All right.
The reversal of, uh, of the point of order.
And there's a reversal.
If I.
Yeah.
Been reading this, trying to, you know, get a better handle on some of these things, and what I read was that a point of order is to ask a question. It's not a debate. It's not, uh, bringing anything else into it except to ask a question. Am I correct?
That was a point of information.
That's a point of information rather than a point of order?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, point, a point order is, well, it's asking a question, but the question is, is this in order? If a person says point of order, the point they're making is, I think this is out of order.
Gotcha. I see. So, but what we have to remind people of, as we go through this again, that is only to ask a question, correct?
No.
Your point of order?
No.
No.
It's not really to ask a question. It's to suggest that what's happening shouldn't be happening. That it's out of order.
Okay. Okay. Wait, sure, it gets used for everything, but what it's supposed to be for, doesn't it?
So are we using language that Ms. Billings sent to us? Because if that's the case, can you send it to me so I can update what we're putting in? Because, you know, I like to try to get it. So am I crossing out all that's in red there?
I, unfortunately.
I'm looking at it on my screen, Juliet, and unfortunately, it's a very tiny, let's see here.
It's the subsections underneath what the, um, the que- point of orders.
I would say you're deleting everything under that first black section under B, under points of order. And then one, two, three, four, five, six. You're, you will be deleting all of that if you choose to use my language, which is much shorter. And it's in compliance with, with Robert's.
Which version of Robert's? The 12th or the 11th?
I, I did use the 12th. That's the one I used when I did it.
Wh- which would, or rules change would be the correct set of rules to, you know, to use, because we have latest, which would mean the 12th edition.
But at the time, we didn't have the latest, so none of it, I don't have that version, so I'm going to have to go out and get that version so I can see what's going on.
So. None of the, I don't think any of the procedure under, uh, in Robert's for this, Juliet, I don't think anything has changed. The only thing that may have changed is the citation where I cite where it's from in the 12th edition. And I don't have the 11th edition, so I can't tell you where it is in there. I, I previously had the 10th edition, um, but nothing changed between the 10th and the 12th.
Yeah.
Except how, how it's laid out.
I, I will find it, uh, also, I'll look for it also and get it to you, Juliet, but it, to me, it, it was, it was more concise, and it was much easier to follow.
Council Baumgardner, do you have the email? Because if you can forward it to me tonight, I can make the changes tonight so that.
I can afford it to you right now, uh, uh, Counselor Parker.
Thank you.
No problem.
That will help me when I'm trying to write these notes up.
It will help.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll send you both emails.
Thank you.
No problem.
Council Baumgardner, I gotta just say, you haven't smiled once since you came on that screen. Is it a bad day? Thank you. Thank you. I always need those smiles.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, settle tickets.
I think we're okay on that one now.
All right, language. Being, wait a minute, I'm just writing my notes for a second.
Fine, take your time.
Under version 12 being emailed. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, all right, now we're on to the next section. So short and sweet. Is this next section first? Okay, how is section C? Did we do that one? Is that one okay too?
I don't know if we did anything on that one.
We added a couple of things on it.
Okay, motions shall be reduced in writing.
Which is already, which was already there.
Yeah.
And is the red in, I have a document with a whole lot of stuff in red. Was the red? You were suggesting, believe?
Yes.
Okay, that helps me. Motions.
You want me to wait a minute, Juliet?
I, I was just thinking Natalie was looking at it, so. I didn't know if they, I have, I'm trying to read what everybody was saying, if that was one of the issues that wasn't.
Yep, no, if, if all the red is stuff you were recommending be taken out, then I.
No, 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 be put in.
Oh, you put in the red stuff?
Yes.
So you're changing it to say, you want it to say precedence of motions?
That was, right, C- Council Baumgardner, that's what you suggested.
I'm looking here now, um.
I can, I can help you, Andre, if you want some.
Yes, uh, so this is on page six.
Yes.
Five. Isn't that page five?
Nope, six. Where's the next page?
Oh.
Number, letter C.
Oh, okay.
So do we, was there any suggestion to change this language?
We added those two at the end.
Yeah.
Because I think we were trying to make sure people, if they were going to withdraw it, they were going to withdraw it correctly.
Yeah, but, but what it says here is not correct. If what's in red, it, it's, it's, it's not correct.
Okay.
In my opinion, I, I, I don't, I never want to sound like I'm the ultimate, because I'm, I, but, uh, I would suggest that using the word precedence of motions, it is a problem, and I wouldn't recommend it. Because if you look at Robert's, there's so much material related to precedence, and what motion takes precedent over another motion, and you're not getting, you don't want to get into that here.
Okay.
Way, it's way too complicated. You want, just if somebody, if there's an issue around precedence, he, he wants somebody to go figure it out with the, this document. Um, but, and the idea that during debate and discussion of a motion, the maker may interrupt a speaker, no, 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 no. In fact, withdrawal of motions, I, I, after a motion has been placed on the floor for discussion, the motion was made and seconded, and the mayor says, okay, is there any discussion? Now the motion's on the floor for discussion. It now belongs to the council. And it can only be withdrawn by the maker of the motion asking permission from the council. Barbara Tarbox used to make hammer this on the council. People would try to withdraw a motion. And then she'd say, like, you can't just, it, you have, it's, it belongs to the body now. The maker can only withdraw it, sort of at the point where they're still making the motion, and before it's been put on the floor for discussion. After that, they can't interrupt a speaker. You, you don't want to have a rule that starts saying, one councillor can interrupt another councillor, um, except for point of order, a couple of those things, but, uh, so my, if you have something about withdrawal of motions, which you don't have to put in at all, it's in Robert's. But if you put it in, my language that I'd suggest would be, after a motion has been placed on the floor for discussion, it belongs to the council and can only be withdrawn by the maker of the motion, asking permission from the council. If there's no objection, the mayor may declare the motion withdrawn. And that language is right out of Robert's, and I have the citations in that thing I sent to, to councillor Baumgardner and councillor Obrey, that hopefully maybe Juliet has now.
I do.
Okay. But you don't even have to put in that language about withdrawal of motions if you don't want to. It's, that's all in Robert's.
Okay, we, so we should just, uh, make a reference to the ruling in Roberts for how.
You really don't even make a reference, Leanne, because.
Okay.
Rules say you follow Roberts.
All right, so.
You don't want to have.
We can. We can take that, those two out.
Yeah.
So you can just keep what's in black there on C, motion shall be reduced. And reduced in writing, is that reduced? Is that how you say it? Reduced in writing?
It'll be reduced.
I'd say she'll.
Hold on, let me see what.
It should be, motion should be reduced to writing.
That's what I would say if it was me, but when requested by the ma.
But it doesn't say that. Yeah, the original said motion shall be reduced in writing, so we can add a word.
It would just be changing the word in to the word to. If you all want to do that, that's. I'm just here to offer suggestions to you. It's up to the three.
Appreciate it very much, so.
Let, let me just add that in. I'm going to put it in red. Two.
Council Baumgardner is almost ready to make a comment about lipstick, and I can tell.
Well, part. That's funny, Councillor Obrey. So part, part of the reason, um, Natalie, uh, behind, I think, this proposed rule is that oftentimes what we have in the council meeting is in, you know, where we've had some meetings where there were just multiple motions put on the floor. Um, and in some cases, I mean, this, it happens pretty frequently, I think, uh, a bit more now than I would say, uh, that what, what, what I, you know, we used to have, uh, even two years ago, so, um, when that happens, oftentimes there will be, I think, a, you know, a moment during the council meeting where there will be like a friendly amendment, and so you'll have an amendment on the floor and, um, because you may be slotted to speak, uh, you know, six, you know, you may be six, behind six other councillors to speak. And you, at that moment, really would like to or need to withdraw that motion. And you can't, because you have to wait on the six, wait for the six other councillors to comment on the motion. And that really bogs down council meetings. It makes council meetings very, very lengthy. And so would this rule was part of the rationale with proposing with this rule was that in the case there is a friendly amendment, or it's clear that there is an amendment that is no longer me, needed, that the maker of that motion can simply state, hey, I withdraw that motion just to avoid the discussion on, on that motion, because it.
Interesting.
Um, so we, that was part of the reason why I did homework, and you had mentioned the precedent, precedence of motion is, you get into kind of, um, uncharted, what, you, to, totally paraphrasing you and maybe misquoting you entirely, but, uh, uncharted waters. And so, uh, you know, I, I just, that, that again was part of the rationale behind it, and I'm wondering if you, you know, after now, I'm learning about that fact, if that would change your opinion, or if maybe you would revise your statement, or if you still think there wouldn't be, if we wouldn't need any additional language.
Could, could I ask a question to clarify that? Wouldn't, when you put a motion on the floor, doesn't it, isn't it like with, with the other things we talked about? Isn't it then the councils to control?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, so you can't take it back at that point until maybe it's your opportunity to speak. I don't know, but I don't think.
What's up?
What?
You froze on me. I don't know about the others, so I didn't hear what you said there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my question is, when you make a motion, it goes to the council. Can we take it back from the council that easily, or do we have to let it go its course?
The maker of the motion can offer, can say, I would like to withdraw my motion. And if no objection, then it can be withdrawn, but they have to ask sort of permission from the council. They can't just say, I withdraw my motion, and it's done.
Okay, now, if they were having all these different conversations, how would we interrupt to withdraw it?
That's the problem that I had when I read that. I thought, eee.
Al- almost, I, I, I saw it almost as a, or a point of order. Or you, you can almost shout, hey, I, I withdraw this motion. Because I think the only time this would apply is if this was really a high stakes meeting where there's clearly, you know, multiple motions put on the floor, or, you know, if there was an egregious, or, or a, uh, in, emotion that is made that needs a technical fix. And, um, again, to avoid discussion on that motion, you can simply say, you know, I withdraw that motion so we can, you know, put forward a new motion.
Or put, put forth correctly, because sometimes we've said numbers wrong or read it wrong, and it has to be reread again.
That's right. That's right. Hmm, hmm, hmm.
It happened. It has worked.
And happens a lot more than you think.
Yes.
Happens a lot.
A lot. A lot.
It's quite a council.
Well, maybe what we could do is maybe if we said during a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of a motion shall call for a point of order and ask the question if he may withdraw. How would it be if it was that way?
That Natalie's put.
Natalie's pulling it up. I don't know.
Parliamentary inquiry. Let's look at parliamentary inquiry. Kind of.
See, I don't even have the correct version, so it's not gonna help.
Well, and I, I don't, I don't think they're all that different again in.
Three ninety-two.
Thirty-three. I hear what it is you want to do. Hmm. What's a good procedure for it is the question.
Yeah.
So it, if I understand you right, Andre, you're saying what you want to do is make it possible for a counselor to indicate, I'm willing to withdraw this motion.
Without going through the, the most, not, you know, motions as in motion we're talking about, but the motions, the short, the, the action of having to wait your turn to withdraw your motion. That you can pre, almost preempt any person who would like to speak on that motion to um, preempt them with the withdrawal of the motion.
Fascinating, okay.
We should have called you at first, huh? Natalie.
I think we're all learning a lot. That's good. I, I feel like I am.
And I, I must say, I, I think it would be great to have uh, at our, you know, next time we talk about the rules changes at our council meeting, that it's early on in the agenda. Um, it was so dense. It was so difficult to, to get through at our last meeting, I felt. Um, and really give it the time and intention it deserved. Um, and so I, I'd be very um, pleased to see if we can, you know, discuss these rules changes early on at our next council meeting.
Is, is that gonna be at the committee of the whole? Is that the next one?
But I, I, I think that should also more formally be an ask of this committee to, you know, to the mayor, as she's creating the agenda, that we, you know, we can look to have it early in the meeting. But that's, that's with, I digress, you know, we can talk about that later.
Yeah, I think, uh, from what I read, we have to, since we adjourned something about the way we ended it, we have to go on for the first thing in the next meeting.
Okay, great.
So, I think that's where we'll be.
So I don't, I, you know, I, I'm not gonna be able to answer your question or suggest something right now about this issue of hmm, what's a good procedure or a process?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hear what, I hear what you'll be able to do, and I'm sure. Way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just don't know.
Okay.
So let's just see, is there something to do with debate and discussion, the maker of a motion?
I've got in here, appeal. Discussion, you want me to read what I've found here?
On, on appeal?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's on, if it's on appeal, that's a, that's that other thing, appeal.
Okay, this is just withdraw. Sorry, wrong thing.
Just withdraw.
Thank you.
And discussion of the maker of a motion. How, what if the wording was just changed? The wording you have here, the maker of a motion on the floor may at any time interrupt a speaker to offer to withdraw the motion so that it's clear that you're not interrupting, that you're offering, you're interrupting to offer to withdraw it. To just say, hey, guys, if you want me to, I'm willing to withdraw that.
Yeah.
And that's all you're gonna say. I mean, you're not gonna launch into a thing. Do, do you know what I mean? It um, may interrupt. May, I would almost, instead of interrupt a speaker, may inject, may, how else could you say it? May.
How about just call? If any time, may call to withdraw his or her motion.
But, okay, now I have a question. Should they present that to the mayor to say, Madam Mayor, I wish to withdraw my motion?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, because technically it should be going to, to the mayor, and then the mayor would ask us, is it okay?
Yeah.
For the whole council to vote on it.
And that's where it may be a parliamentary thing, which if I, when I have time, I'll look up parliamentary, maybe appropriate to interrupt to say, Madam, Madam Mayor, it would it be, would it be appropriate, would it be in order for me to withdraw my motion? And you may be able to interrupt with that kind of parliamentary, it's called a parliamentary inquiry?
Yeah, because then it goes on to say, you know, deemed withdrawn upon request of the mover and consent of the council.
Correct. If, it doesn't have to be voted on. If, if the mayor just says, does anyone object to Counselor Heed withdrawing his motion? No one objects, then the mayor can declare it withdrawn.
Yeah.
That, mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay. So how we changing this verbiage?
Well, during, during debate and discussion, the maker of a motion may at any time, they, at any time address the mayor and
Yeah.
Withdraw a motion?
Address, hold on, the mayor and offer to withdraw.
A motion, or the motion, or.
Withdraw.
Andre.
The motion.
Andre, is that working for you? You have some thoughts?
No, that works for me.
Uh-huh.
Okay, wait a minute. All right, hold on.
Yep.
Debate discussion. I probably should have kept everything.
And you probably don't need to have both a debate and discussion. I mean, debate and discussion are the same thing.
Yeah.
You prob.
So during, during a discuss, during the discussion.
During discussion of a motion can take out a debate and during discussion of a motion.
All right, during discussion of a motion, the maker of a motion on the floor may at any time address the mayor and offer to withdraw the motion on the floor. The motion is me, immediately, no, because it will, is that immediately withdrawn?
Well, it says upon request of the, the mover and consent of the, so it, it can say that. You could say, if there's no objection, the mayor I have to look up the word, may deem, the mayor may rule the motion withdrawn, but the wording you have there is probably fine too.
Yeah, I think that's fine. We've got there.
Mm-hmm, it's, it, because it's, it says
Alright.
Consent of the council. No one, no one objects, or.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can keep two in with the changes we just made.
Yeah.
Okay, and take out number three.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's basically saying the mayor follows Roberts' rules when it comes to precedence. The only thing I will tell you, having done this as much as I have, precedence is hugely confusing.
Yeah.
To me, so I, I, if the mayor sometimes has trouble with precedence, it's because it's tough. Um, so be sympathetic and support the mayor.
Alright. Counselor Baumgartner, how do you think we did on decorum and debate? Seems to me like we had a lot of questions on that. I was getting a little flustered at that point, to tell you the truth.
I should have put the paint number in. I apologize for that.
You know, m- most definitely, I, um, you know, we, we received a lot of feedback from counselors on, on that section. I, I think it may be helpful to to reduce the language. Um, it's very heavy right now. I, I think we should um, also, you know, when we're talking about decorum, we also want to highlight respect, right? Um, and so I, I think, especially, you know, if we're describing to counselors how they should conduct themselves, we should not so much be in the interest of telling counselors how to act, but um, setting guidelines as to how they should act. Um, and we should be utilizing more positive language as well. Um, throughout the, you know, uh, the rules.
I'm sorry, I missed the whole thing.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you're, you were going in and out, so I'll miss what you said.
Sure, um, so I, I was, you know, in terms of decorum, um, I was saying the council, we got a lot of feedback from the council on decorum. Um, I would suggest that we, you know, simplify the language, you know, we have a lot written, and we should also, um, you know, it, it, you know, the section should, should be less so about uh, telling counselors how to uh, conduct themselves and more so setting guidelines as to how they should uh, act. Um, in, you know, treat uh, their fellow counselors, and so we should be utilizing in positive language in this section, uh, in much more simp- simple language, and we should refrain from telling counselors how to act, and I certainly don't think that was our intention. But uh, we certainly don't want to hinder free speech. Um, and so I think if we just clear up, clear up that language so there are not any issues.
Okay, it is on pages three ninety-one to three ninety-five. I took it at word from word, what they had in there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I didn't want to, I did not want to put my own verbiage in there from my personal, what I think personally, because I did not want to get into what they would say as you're confining my words. This is from Roberts' rules.
Well, I think, I think if we can do that, then, then they can read it, because that's what I didn't know, and that's what I said to him. I do not have the reference here. So I can't tell you, but I will come back with it. But where it says decorum of debate, maybe we could change that just a little bit. Can we change a heading? Like maybe decorum.
It literally says decorum and debate.
Yeah, that, that's the language from Roberts, Leanne, and I, I think that's, that's fine language, but I think, yes, yes. Yes, Juliet, the words in here are from Roberts. Um, but I think the difficulty is um, it, when you read it in Roberts, there's even more language.
Oh.
And so this, yeah, you can't, you can't pull all of what Robert says, you can't. And so when you pull this language out of the context of how it's framed in Roberts, it comes across a little differently, I think. Um, I know I reacted to a couple of things in here, and then when I read the same thing in Roberts, I was like, oh, okay. Because it's, it's all in a context. Sorry, that's my phone ringing.
I was trying to answer it for you. All over the place.
So do I just?
My, my suggestion to you is that if you focus on, can I make this stop? Oh, I'm sorry. If you focus on that uh, no counselor shall speak in debate unless recognized by the mayor.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay.
Right, that was a big one.
Which is?
And that's somewhere in what you have.
Addressing all remarks through the chair. That was number three.
Yeah, so how is it worded in here, addressing our remarks? Right, but again, if you, if you put it into a, instead of saying counselors can't cannot address remarks to individuals, but, but, but that counselors, uh, that all remarks, address all remarks through the mayor, so it's in a positive language.
All remarks.
What you can't do.
All right.
The other one is that counselors should confine marks to the merits of the pending que- question. That's, that's just a huge one. If the, the person running the meeting really enforces that, wait a minute. You're saying some stuff right now, and it's really not addressing the pending question. It's out of order. I'm the mayor, that's out of order. You gotta come back, speak to the pending, the question in front of us.
All right, so can we, for number three, should I just take out the I? The I's underneath, all, address all remarks through the chair, would, would that suffice or no?
Yeah.
Well, I, hmm.
Or do we need more verbiage?
So again, if, I don't know if you can look at the thing that I provided to Leanne and, and.
Okay, wait a minute. I, I gotta, I have like three things going at once.
No, it's getting really hard to look at multiple screens. I can't do it.
Okay, wait a minute.
But I, I offered sort of a different way of laying this out that starts with, and, and I have the references from this version of, of Roberts, that no counselor shall speak in discussion or debate unless recognized by the mayor, number one. The maker of a motion has the privilege of speaking first.
Is that in the email you sent?
Yes.
On the.
And if, hopefully, that was the one Andre was able to send to you.
Well, this one says something about referrals, appealing the decision.
Oh, is that, that might be one where I, I, I made some comments, but I didn't kind of lay.
Don't have, I don't have the other one.
Okay. I can, it to you, but I can't.
Found it, I found it. It's the ones, for the two of them. Um.
So this one is laid out with B, C, D, and D is debate, decorum and debate, limits of debate?
Yes.
Then we could, you know, if we go with the shorter version, we could then make reference to Roberts' rules between three ninety-one and I think it was three ninety-five or something like that, for further, for further explanation.
Mm-hmm.
What about if we did something like that? They have a question and they want to read it.
Right.
We've kind of given them the outline, and we're trying to say it as nice as possible. And then we say, if you have further questions, you can refer to Roberts' rules, three ninety-one, and.
Oh, you don't put that in the rules, because that's not really.
No, no. Just, just um, at the bottom of the.
Alright.
Okay, I, I'm, now that I'm getting, I am getting confused. I just need to know somebody, I'm trying to figure out how to do it, because at one point we were told we weren't doing it, this, it wasn't rules, we weren't doing rules. And I won't say who said that, but I'm like, but it's in Roberts' rules, so it is a rule. So I just need to figure out how to extract. So do we take out confining remarks to the merits, uh, please? Um, can, uh, remarks must?
I, I think you have it written for you, don't you? And what Natalie sent?
And if you're willing to basically delete what you have and substitute what I'm offering you, it would.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out the first.
So you would delete all of D that you have in red here for decorum?
Alright, let me just, I'm just gonna do a strikeout, and then what?
It's, you're really deleting D, E, and.
Debate is in here though. Debate is in here though. Debate is in our, debate is in our original rules. And limits of debates in our original rules.
No, I think that's next, though, we haven't gotten to that, we.
But I actually combined them into one thing, Leanne, and just. Date decorum and debate, limits of debate in one. One packet.
Alright, so.
That was the big, one of the biggest. Uh, objections was the limitation of time to speak.
So they want fi- they want their five minutes. But do they realize they go over five minutes? And if, if the mayor tries to interrupt them, they get up, some get upset.
Well, that, they'll, we'll soon learn that you gotta make your statements mean something and it's gotta be decisive. You know, we gotta be a little retrained, got a little out of control.
Hmm, the ma- the mayor has to enforce the five minutes and the council has to back the mayor up. When some protests and say. The mayor ruled, you can do an appeal, but unless the majority of the council vote with you on an appeal. The mayor. The mayor's job is to maintain order.
We gotta get her gra- gavel.
So, okay. Take all of D out.
You really take D E and F out and you're combining them. I, I combined them into one.
Alright, so what, what I'm reading from the email you sent for roles to consider. I extracted some of what you had writ, but we wanted to follow Roberts and eliminate language I think may cause the problem. Did you send a attachment?
Hmm, it may have been a separate email. I would send it to you, but I.
No, no, I found it, yeah, I got it, okay.
You got it?
It was a separate email, yep. Alright, so. Confine, so keep, you, council should confine remarks to merits of pending question, address all remarks to the mayor. Address each counselor as. As counselors. Last name, avoid personal attacks, avoid alluding, alluding to improper motives, okay?
Yep.
At council meetings, okay, so that should be. Considered. Oh, I see what you did, okay, now I get it. I like it, I, I'm good with that. I'm really good with that.
Andre, how do you feel?
I, I am as well.
The only thing you all have to fill in, in, in number four, under that D. I put counselors are limited to two speeches of three, four, or five minutes, cause I didn't know how many minutes. That's up to you. So you have to decide which number of minutes you're putting in there.
Are we keeping it to five, so that I heard that, I understand where they were going with it, that. People in the public get to have five minutes.
Yeah, the people in the public, we're not limiting them. What we're trying to do is limit the counselors. So like if I say something, I'm gonna say it and I got three minutes to say it. Then it goes to the next person that wants to speak. It will come back to me if I have something additional I wanna add to it. But you're trying to move it around the council. So that everybody gets an opportunity to talk. If you take nine people and they're gonna have five minutes, that's forty-five minutes on one subject. It, it, that's the way I feel. I, I think, I think we should try staying with the three, but I'm just one voice. What do you, what do you think? Andre, I'm sorry, I'm not consul- calling you counselor.
I think, you know, a lot of these rules that we're talking about now, it's gonna take. We, we may not even be able to get through at the, this next meeting. Um, so, I mean, I'm looking now at just some of the. Sections that we um. You know, that counselors had brought up, really the decorum section and. And uh, you know, we, we do wanna balance also, you know. Um, revising. Based on legitimate uh, concerns. Um, but we also want to. Refrain from making revisions because people don't want a certain role change because they don't like it. Um, in some cases, you know, what could, some counselors may not like, maybe it's best for all of us moving forward. You know, and um, maybe I didn't, I didn't describe that uh. You know, as, as in the way I wanted, but uh. You know, we, we should be making rules that isn't necessarily a set of rules that we want, but a, a set of rules that we need. Um, maybe, I think that's what I was trying to go with it, so. And, and, and that's why I think it is important to articulate, um, you know. Articulate our approach um, to, you know, that we've taken to the council. I, I felt like especially given our. You know, our, our super, uh, superstar counselor Parker was not. Uh, in attendance, we couldn't necessarily articulate really the strengths of this, you know, these uh. These roles changes, um, to the extent that I think we really could have, so. I'm looking forward to the next meeting because I, I know she'll be there and, you know, I think, you know, assuming all goes well, you know, I, I will be there and. You know, you'll be there as well, couns- counselor Aubrey, to really describe. Our, you know, approach to.
I'm gonna be right there with my Robert rules for dummies.
Yes, yes, um, and then. And then I think, um, you know, perhaps if we even, we had that opportunity, we would have solicited a diff- different feedback from the council.
Yeah.
Because I, I think the council kind of reacted as opposed to really uh. Fully comprehended.
Well, we couldn't, I could not answer their questions, and that's what I said to them. I cannot answer it, I apologize for it. But I don't have a reference, so now we'll have references. We can say to them, you know, this is where it came from, and uh, we're not. Just creating them, we're trying to shorten them, make it easier.
Yep.
But create respect and proper decorum.
Yeah.
Which I, I really think everybody wants to have. So.
Back to the question, I, I was so, three, four, or five minutes, do the three of you have? Any consensus between the three of you on how many minutes?
We originally said three, because we, we figured three be good to get it out. An additional, which. We didn't write in, we thought about it, but we didn't, we talked about it, was additional two minutes if they need to further have. Further questions, so it would work out to five minutes. But we might as well just keep the five minutes. I understand where counselor Aubrey's going with it. Because we could be there. And the other problem without that is they go twice and they repeat the same argument, and that's a problem.
Well, it's gonna have to be sometimes that, you know, somebody does. A point of order and, and asks the mayor. To clarify what subject we're talking about. It's gonna put a lot on, on petri's, but it's really what we have to do, I think. And. You know, uh, it's not like we're chiseling stone, if we try to do it this way and we find that people aren't able to. Express their opinions, but because it can go as, we're not putting any limitations, Juliette, on how often they can speak. It's just how long they can speak each time they have an opportunity. I'm, I'm sure, I don't know what the RTM's doing, but I, with Mr. Whitehouse there, who I have. Mixed feelings about, that man could go on forever. And I don't know what they do in his case, but. They're probably reviewing their rules. And, and there's been others that were the same way. Jane used to be a, a forever speaker. What was her last name?
Leanne, I'm just coming about something you just said. If you look at number four, what, what I wrote here.
Yeah.
Like, you wanna change one, something I wrote. Cause I did say counselors are limited to two speeches, which is out of Robert.
On each question, which I agree with.
Right, if you're limited to two. That's two turns, two speeches, but you just said we're not limiting how many times a person can talk.
Oh, okay.
I, I think, I, I, Council Aubrey, I thought we had a discussion saying that we do want to limit them discuss. Because there are times when there's some who have spoken five times on the same subject.
Yeah.
The other problem with your rules, just so you know, and this is not you guys, this is before you, is. Do these rules apply to both? Your formal council and committee of the whole?
That's what I've been trying to figure out.
That you should be confused by it, Juliette. The, the rules have never been clear about whether they apply to just formal council. Or council and committee of the whole. I suggested way back when that they be clearer. So typically in committee of the whole, you don't limit how many times people can speak. But in formal council, you do. But the rules, it's, it's, that's very fuzzy. And something for you to think about.
Yeah, cause it, that's section, that's ru- rule number ten. That's committee procedures. Cause technically committee of the whole is a committee.
But are committee procedures different from council procedures? I don't know what room or ten was number ten.
That would be page number eight, um, nine and ten.
Page number nine and ten. Standing committees of the council, committee procedures. Quorum. Reports, resolutions, any subject matter, I don't think, does. I don't think it addresses how long people can talk. How, the times.
Which, do we add that line to both? Sections. Just to be consistent. But if you're saying that at committees, they can ta- speak as many times as they want. Unaccording, is that according to Robert's rules? I apologize if I don't know that one.
I, I can't answer that, I'd have to check Roberts. I, I can tell you, when I was on the council. That was the practice and the thinking that in committee of the whole, it's less formal. That you don't, you don't limit how many times people can speak. How long they can, but in. Formal council. I think they limited both the number of times and the length of time. Um, and Roberts does suggest. Ten minutes total. Two turns, which means two five-minute turns. But you can make it shorter, that's totally up to you.
Counselor Baumgartner, what do you think?
So how, how would it impact uh? So if we were to make ca- cow, the cow me. As uh. The regular council meetings. Um, and same set of rules.
I don't think we can. Uh, unless, unless we find it in Robert's rules.
Okay.
So that one would have to stay as is. Rule ten. Until we can find it in Robert's rules.
No, you can, you can make any rule you want. That, that's, the whole idea is you go by Roberts, except where you say you're not gonna go by Roberts. You have a thing in here on reconsidering a motion. And the reason it's in the rules. Is because what it says is different than what Roberts says on reconsidering.
Okay, wait a minute, where did?
All the other motions, because on all the others, you follow Roberts. For some reason, on reconsidering. You have something different than Roberts.
What page is that one? Okay, what number is that one? How's that?
Page eight. Number, was that number, can I read it? Is it fourteen?
Yeah, H, H.
Fourteen reconsiderations.
Yeah, that was from.
And the councils always had that in there, it goes back, it was there when I was on the council, I never. Um, I haven't quite figured out why, but it's diff- what it says is different than Roberts. And that's fine, you can have a rule that disagrees with Roberts.
You know, I think our. I think our main goal. Right now is to improve our meetings. And this one, I think we could just kind of leave alone, cause I don't think it's been any bone of contention.
Which, the reconsideration?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I didn't mean, I, I was.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm thinking is. We're gonna have all we can do to. Get what we're working with now through. What's kind of like picking our battles.
Absolutely.
Unless somebody feels very strongly about something on page eight.
No, I think you just need to resolve the, what you're gonna do with the. Two speeches and three, four, or five minutes, that's the one you really.
Yep.
Resolved. And does that apply to council and committee of the whole, or are you doing them? Is committee of the whole staying informal as it's been, where people can speak? More than two times.
I, I think that would probably be okay, cause most times when we get to where we're putting it out. And we're making our decision on it, we've already beat it to death, and so they don't, it, it doesn't usually go that long.
Well, that's under that, under council, committee of the whole is where we're having a problem. Spend hours at committee of the whole.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's where the issues lie, if, I, I shouldn't say issue. Concern is, my concern, because we have. Had a subject, and then all of a sudden we spent. Hours upon it and didn't get to the other subjects until later on, to almost af- af- after ten o'clock at night. Now, after ten o'clock at night, we're supposed to make, we're all supposed to have a consensus if we're gonna continue. Uh, is that happening? It's not happening, and we need to have that. Cause we just continue. No, we need to stop and say, hey, we need to take roll call here and say, do we wanna continue this? Or are we gonna postpone to a time definite? Is that the word I want? Yeah, postpone to a time definite, so we can finish the subject. Cause I do not wanna spend any hours till midnight. And we've have done that. I don't wanna do that.
And you know, that's the thing, it, it's okay if we do it. You know, so depending, it might be an issue where it. That's just the nature of the beast where we're going to go late. It should not become common practice. And I think that, that is what has, that, that is what has happened, it, and it is not. Uh, out, out of the norm for us to be going into eleven. Eleven PM, eleven thirty, midnight, I mean. That's.
Yeah.
Now, one or two a year, understandable, but one or, you know, one, two, three a month, that, that's.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, here it says, under limits of debate. It says counselors shall not speak more than once upon any question until. Other members who wish to speak shall have relinquished the floor. So we're not restraining them from anything.
Just wanna give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Where, where'd you just read from, Leanne?
Page seven. The last uh, last paragraph.
Which is already in here. Which was already part of our process.
Well, right, you, you stay. After any counselor has spoken. Nobody gets to speak a second time until everybody's had a chance.
Right.
Right.
You're limiting people to, in yours, you did, you limited them to three minutes, now you may be changing that or not. In my thing, I have put. Limited to two speeches. In my thing, I have put limited to two speeches. So you just, if you use mine, you need to take that reference to two. Oh, that's all I'm saying. If you use my language, be sure you change that in number four.
I think if we, if we left this and we've limited it to three minutes. I, I think that would work. What do you think?
You said, I'm sorry, Counsel Obray, how many minutes?
Three minutes. When somebody, the counselor shall not speak more than once upon any question. Then put in there, limit three minutes until other members who wish to speak shall have relinquished the floor. So in other words, we go around, anybody that wants to speak, and then we go back to that person. That was debating it at the beginning, and they have another three minutes. And then we go around, and if somebody, everybody wants to speak again, okay. And we, you know. I, I think that way it will limit it just by this, the series of how it's gonna go. Cause you can't talk, if we say, you're not gonna talk more than three minutes, we're gonna give you three minutes, tell us what you think. We move on. Move on, move on, move on. We come back to you. If you're feeling. You know, that something hasn't been added to it that's to your liking, you got another three minutes. Cause that's one of our biggest problems. And also, I don't know where we would put it in here, but. When you've spoken and you've finished, you do not talk again without asking the mayor. Cause that happens all the time. Well, that isn't exactly what I meant. And they start talking again. Well, they're out of order. And somebody should be saying, you are out of order, you will wait till it's your turn again.
So one of the things in the rule, that the, the very first thing under debate says, no counselor shall speak. In discussion or debate unless recognized by the mayor.
Right.
So.
That's something we've gotta make happen. So we may need to sit down and, she may be listening, um, which would be wonderful. But we may need to sit down and, and talk with the mayor.
Well, it's also a time that any of you can call, that would be point of order.
Yeah.
Counselor He, Madam Mayor, Counselor He speaking right now is out of order.
Right.
The mayor has to rule, Counselor He, you're out of order or not. And then if the body doesn't agree, the body appeals and the body votes. That's how you control that. It's not just the mayor. It's, the other members have to say, Madam Mayor. Counselor He's out of order. So you're supporting the mayor when you do that.
I think we should, I think we should try staying with the three minutes.
Well, what about on verse, so first order, I guess would be first order of questions?
Yeah.
First order of questioning. Uh, maybe, what, so just hear, hear me out, um, five minutes per person. I mean, five minutes per, per counselor. For the first round of questions, and then for any second round, could we limit it to say ninety seconds? For two minutes?
Two minutes would be good. Ninety seconds, my God, they'll be hanging us.
Or three.
Yep. Okay, I, I think we've reached a point, uh, you may agree with me, you may not agree with me. But I, I think we should type up what we have talked about tonight and come back and review it again. What do you think?
Are we, are we supposed to be doing this next third Tu- Tuesday?
According to the rules, because we did not adjourn correctly. They can call for it to be the first thing of order on the agenda.
But I think she asked, which meeting, Leanne? Is it next Tuesday?
Yeah. It says, this is what I got from one of the counselors. After reviewing Robert Rules of Order, 11th edition, I have found the following. When a motion to adjourn is announced without the member recognized as having the floor. It can be entertained, entertained as a motion with unanimous consent. Point of information is an incidental motion, God, I hate this stuff. Motion to adjourn yields to any incident motion. Also, any request for inquiries take precedent over any out, any motion with the purpose of conducted.
Is that true?
Due to adjourning during the pending business. The uncompleted order of business must be taken up at the next meeting. After brief opening ceremonies, minutes are under unfinished business.
Is that the page 240 that person was talking about?
Uh, no.
That person give pages?
I'll send this to you.
New Robert. Have page, page numbers, just so you know.
Page two.
Page 240 under number, uh, okay, 240 is. Cases where the assembly can adjourn without a motion. Or a legitimate renewal of the privileged motion and its abuses. Which section was that person talking about?
Page 240, and then she's got page 70 through 72. Page 235 and 236. I don't remember my saying. Motion to adjourn. I don't think I would have done that. I mean. I did wanna stop talking about it, but I don't think I did that. I'll have to watch the meeting again.
And the person who's writing this, what's, what's their point? What is it they want to have?
They want rules to come back first thing at our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I had the meeting for tonight, and I will have, I would like to have another meeting before our next council meeting.
Oh, which would put it at next Monday or sometime this week.
Whatever everybody can do. Does next Monday work for everybody?
Uh, let me, oh, hold on. Still old fashioned, I have to look my agenda book.
That's all right. Don't worry about it. At least she's checking. I forget all the time. Next Monday would be the 26th.
Okay, I'm free at that, yeah, but it has to be at 5:30, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right, so.
Baumgartner?
Um, I am available Monday.
Okay.
As in more.
Natalie, you join us next Monday?
If you want me here, yep.
Uh, yes, so.
It's been very helpful.
Is it okay to include Natalie on the email?
Sure.
Is that okay with you? Cause then I'll type it up and email everybody to see if that's okay, and then we'll go from there.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And, uh, Chair Obray, do you give us any homework assignments?
Well, we've got it, what we need to do is, there were a couple pages we didn't go over. I don't think there's anything too controversial in them, but I think it would be good if we read. Um, from 10 to the end, just so if there's anything we. That's the, that's a problem.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Right, those, those didn't seem to be the parts that were getting a lot of.
Right.
Attention.
Okay, so, quick question.
Yes.
The committees, are we gonna change it to standing committees, or is that, you want to say committees and referrals? This is from your notes, Natalie.
Uh, these are from my notes.
I, the suggestions you sent us.
Um, I can't answer that, cause I'm not quite sure, Juliette, that the thing to use. The thing to use for me is just the document where I put. I actually sort of laid, which, the, the first one was just, um. Sort of my, giving some examples of suggestions. But then, there was later where I offered some actual language.
Got it.
And I can send that, just, okay, so the first one you can ignore. Okay.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna work on this. It might take me a couple days, just so I make sure I have.
That's fine. I appreciate you doing it.
Somebody said there was a, an error on page five. Was it like a spelling error or something?
Uh, I'll have to go back through my notes. I don't remember.
We were, we're deleting most of five after.
Right, that's what I thought, so.
Deleting, then you were, uh, up under, you know, the which Roberts rules. I think we said it was fine. I think people said it was fine to just keep it the way you were proposing.
Yep.
So I don't think. Point.
Oh, wait. Oh, no, we're right, okay.
Yep, and if you have any questions about my stuff as you're doing your minutes. Juliette, feel free to call me or email me.
Okay. Thank you.
Things not clear.
You know, I don't ever, in all the different things that I've done, I don't remember ever having a class on Robert's rules.
Hmm.
No, and, and we really need that. And I'm trying to read it, I'm reading it from a different perspective, so.
Yeah, I think, I think years ago Barbara used to do something, but obviously we've gotten totally away from that, so. That might just be a recommendation for future ATM and councils as they come in, that there be a, a re- review of.
I did ask, um, the town manager to see if the, um, CCM or somebody else could. Find out if there's a class being taught and teach us. So, cause then, that should be one of the counselors' things, to have that soon as they get on board. Or even a refresher for it. So I don't remember what he said. I have to go back to the email, but I did ask him to check around.
I think the only thing they ever come to us and give us a class on is FOIA.
Yes, and that's, and that's not, we should know a little bit more.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I think in the future, you know, one thing, um, for the next, this could be a suggestion to the next council, but. You know, I think it'd be appropriate, you know, for the next, once that new council was sworn in, to have. Very, very early on, um, after being sworn in, a presentation from FOIA, um, maybe Tom. Tom Hennig, yes, from the FOIA, uh, commission, uh, as well as maybe an outside person to, um. Uh, to, uh, discuss rules, you know, uh, Roberts rules to us. Um, I, I think that kind of education would be so helpful, especially early on in the process.
I think the city did a FOI and we were invited, but, um.
That we put on, you know, that as a council, as a town, and, and I think that way, um, you know, especially with Zoom now, and all. You know, videos recorded on, and, um, and disseminated on the local public access. Um, it might even be helpful for some of the local boards and commissions to tune in. When if that opportunity could, you know, arises. I, I know there would be an interest, um, because there, you can never, um. You know, know too much information.
Well, it, it opens your mind to a different type of thinking, something that you haven't done before. Now you're in a new position and there's new things you really have to learn, not just the process of the meeting, but what. Tells you how the meeting's gonna be. And I, I think it would be really helpful. So. Guys, I can't, I cannot thank you enough.
Leanne, if I can offer to you just one thing, um.
Yeah.
The, the rules of Roberts rules for dummies.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's great, kind of for an introduction, but no, sometimes it can create trouble. Because it doesn't get the detail right.
Right, well, I wouldn't use it to write anything.
No, but I, 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 we had some trouble sometimes at the RTM when somebody would come in. Convinced they knew how to do something because they'd read it in the, the simplified version. And then have to sit down with them with this version.
Yeah.
It is, it's act, when you come to appreciate this thing, it's just, it's a brilliant document. It's just brilliant. But obviously it's huge, um, and takes a lot of time to understand. And I don't, as I say, the whole thing of precedence of motions, that part's beyond me. I haven't been able to figure that all out.
Yeah.
But, uh, but just, just know that sometimes the simplified ones can lead people astray, cause they're too simple.
Right.
Right.
Oh, it's, for me, it's probably appropriate.
Okay, gotcha. I understand. I started there too. Yep.
All right, if there's no objection, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Go.
Second.
All those in, in favor?
I.
Thank you so much. And Natalie, thank you so much. I'll look to see you next Monday and everybody else, and we'll learn some more.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What's that?
Good night.
Thank you, and, um, be sure, I, I don't, I don't know who's controlling, uh, Counsel Parker, are you controlling the recording?
Uh, I think Lee, both accounts, the both of us were. I, I mean, uh, Tom Andrew Burt told me to make us book co. So hopefully I.
Just be sure to hit the end, the end record button before the leave. I, I don't know if it will do anything, if it, if it won't save if you leave before hitting. End record, um, but, uh.
So I can hit stop now?
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm hitting stop now. Stop recording.